Okay, well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the July 13th work session. We'll have two work session items today. And just want to remind anybody of the rules here. There'll be no motions, no votes, and we're only considering the information that's presented. First item to address proposed CARES Act funding for the Cobb County School and City of Marietta School Districts. So with that, I'm going to ask Grant Rivera to lead us off this morning with his presentation. And as many may know, Grant is the superintendent of the Marietta School District.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner, and to the board. Thank you so much for allowing me to have this time today on behalf of 9,000 students and 1,400 staff. So I appreciate greatly your consideration. Each of you should have received some information relative to our request. Obviously, that is separate from addition to the budget request. I want to talk just for a moment, and I really want to compartmentalize this around who we are and what we've done, the nature of our requests, and then really, what can you expect as a partner with us going forward? So let me speak for a moment about what we've done. And I think, as we all well know in this community, when schools closed on March 16th, for us in Marietta City Schools, it was about an immediate value statement. And there were some immediate conversations we had so we could start Monday morning, the 16th, so children didn't fall through the cracks of a pandemic. And for us, it was around delivering meals to children. And it would end up being, from March to May, over a quarter million meals delivered to 81 different bus stops across 18 different bus routes in this community. It was a value statement that we were going to go out to our community to make sure our kids didn't suffer. It was a value statement around making sure that students had access to technology. And I can boast in Marietta that we had 97% of 9,000 kids, 97% of our kids, pre-K through 12, had access to our platform, our learning management system, which we happen to call School G, but the way in which the teacher would communicate both live and share work and what have you, 97% of our kids engaged from March until May. And yet, what we know is that if you look at the national research study of 5 million kids will tell you that if we compare this year's kids to last year's kids, they will start the school year with the best of scenarios, 50% behind in reading, 50% behind in math and 30% behind in reading. So for us, it was about making sure there were no excuses around children going hungry. There were no excuses around children having access to technology and hotspots. We would hand out over 700 hotspots, over 3,000 Chromebooks. Our commitment was to make sure that every child could lean in and engage with a teacher and not fall further behind, as the research said that they would. On top of that, there was incredible engagement on our part to solicit feedback from families on how the experience went. So we would conduct town halls and surveys. We would ask families, how did we do? What I've said over and over and over again is families showed us incredible grace when we closed schools over a weekend, but they were not going to let us make the same mistake twice. So if there was anything relative to their child's learning that we, as a school district, needed to do better, we had to be responsive to that. So whether it was around learning, whether it was around safety, we've conducted, we did initial group of town halls in May and June, just this past, the past week and a half. I did another 20 town halls with staff, with every single school, in English and in Spanish. All of this was to get information that is in front of you today, which is, if we want to keep our kids learning and as safe as possible, what does that look like? So that's really where we've been, and I want you to know that overarching as a value statement, our values have been around making sure kids are fed, kids have access to technology, and the kids have access to learning. And that ultimately, we engage families as partners in this process, so therefore, we can do the best we can in these most uncertain times. So with that said, I'd like to just point for a moment to not only the item that I gave you, but also the specific budget. And I know you guys deal with budgets that are much larger than mine, so I'm not going to insult you by going line for line. I just want to highlight some themes for you. Everything that we put in this budget is about us being able to open, and listen, I'll stand before you right now and say that we're doing everything we possibly can to open. And I need you to hear unequivocally from me that, and I was standing out in the parking lot before I came in here, talking to the head of the Department of Public Health, if at any point in time, we are advised to pivot, we will pivot in an instant. Right now, we are proceeding forward with an August 4 opening. We're welcoming our teachers back July 27th. And our plan is to do everything possible to put these types of strategies that you could allow us to implement in place to keep our kids and staff safe. And again, I point you to this document to tell you, there's a priority around physical distancing. What we know, in Marietta, if you're not aware, we made a commitment that masks are required. What I've said publicly over and over again is that we will be on the safe side of medical research, and we'll be on the progressive side of student and staff safety. But even with that, and you can see in here, whether it's front desk shields, whether it's table and desk shields for teachers, I've got a second grader. They sit at tables. We believe these partitions will keep our kids safer. We also talk about bus transportation. We are prepared to operationalize, taking the temperatures of 9,000 children every single day before they get on a school bus, walk into a school building, or get out of a carpool line. Other aspects that you'll see in here really are about our survival, candidly. Cleaning and disinfecting. Prior to closing schools in March, we were putting out $6,000 a week to have extra custodial staff in buildings, disinfecting classrooms, disinfecting common areas, wiping down high-touch areas, and disinfecting our buses every night. We also have in here specifics around providing hand sanitizer in every single classroom, on every single front office table and common area. You'll see also some notes around testing and screening. I made reference to operationalizing 9,000 temperature checks every morning. You'll see the need for thermometers and support personnel, and I'll park there for just a moment. Any of us who have children know that, or have children now or had children in the past, you know, the general rule of thumb was you could send kids back to school when they were 24 hours fever-free. Like, the rules have totally changed. And one of the challenges is that if we're fortunate enough to open, and it's safe enough to open, can you imagine for a minute, let's just take this room in here, if every single person in this room, and we thought for a minute, all right, you can come back after 14 days, you don't need a COVID test because you were just around somebody who was symptomatic. But you were around somebody who was tested positive, you can go back 14 days with one or two negative tests. And you just had a sneeze and a sniffle, I may send you home for three days, but I may not. If you think about the staff strain on us being able to track, not just the people in this room as an example, but 9,000 kids and 1,400 adults, everything on here is about us being able to do that safely. One of the requests that we had is that we have one, one person to help the, all the additional school staff that we're going to allocate, people that we're pulling out of other critical functions to make sure we can do this thing the safest way possible. You'll also see PPE, specifically masks and shields, student masks and staff masks. We also have in there something that I think is important, it's a low dollar figure, but one of the things we have to address is the social emotional needs of kids. We're dealing not only with a medical pandemic, but we're dealing with a social emotional one as well. And you see, we've listed some resources in there and some requests to help mental health and emotional support. And then the last broad bucket there is really around connectivity. And I'll be honest with you, if we're not able to open, or at some point we close, this doesn't even scratch the surface of what we need. We, as a school district, made a commitment, we took a poll of our families back in March, and we said, how many of you don't have access to Wi-Fi? We made a commitment to outfit 12 buses to drive around the community and park in different parts of our city so kids could log in. I would hear stories about kids sitting in their front yards where the bus was parked a couple hundred yards away and they could access. Even on top of that, we handed out over 700 hotspots to the tune of $158,000. Our community would give us just over $36,000 to fund that. You start to see, we run out of money before we run out of need. So as you look at this and you think about our needs in Marietta, and I'll close with this, I want you to know that we have lived our value statements up till today. That no child goes hungry. That no child doesn't have the ability to access to a caring adult as their teacher when they so desperately need not just the content they can share, but the relationship they continue to build. This idea that we partnered with families through town halls and through surveys, a very introspective and transparent look at what we've done well and what we must do better. I don't know what the next couple of weeks or month hold. We are relying on experts to tell us, and there are times when I feel like I have more questions than answers. But what I commit to you in this request is $2.9 million of continued value statements. I don't need you to fund a school district to operate. I need you to help a school district in a pandemic. And I want you to know that we're willing to partner. We are grateful. We have leaned on anyone and everyone. Marietta City Schools has been so progressive in trying to get additional support. You may have seen in the paper this past weekend, we went out and sought $640,000 from a Cobb Works grant to get 50 additional employees, not on your dime, and not on my dime, and not on anybody else's dime, but through a grant to put people back to work. They're the people that will take these thermometers you're going to put in their hand to keep our kids safe before they get on school buses. I want you to know that our value statements have been on display since March 16th, perhaps for generations before that. And the way in which you support us and the way in which you reflect on this allows us to continue to do that. Our value statements around safety, our value statements around making sure that no child falls through the cracks of this pandemic, both academic and social emotional, and this commitment to equity. And I'll leave you with one last thought. So I share with you how proud I am that we served 250,000 meals. We ran buses every single day. I can tell you a quick story. When we would put out an email to 1,200, 1,400 Marietta staff to say, who's willing to volunteer to serve food to kids, people got angry because it would fill up within the first 15 minutes. We would fill up 250 slots a week within seconds, within minutes. What really troubles me is that I know we handed out a quarter million meals, and that only covered half of the kids who were actually eligible. So when we start talking about equity and access and values and community, this document isn't necessarily some way that we want you to pay for something we should be doing already. This document is about us making sure we can serve our kids in a time that we've never faced before. And where our values will be on display for everyone to see, and quite candidly, I couldn't be more proud of what we've represented to date, and I couldn't be more proud of the partnership we can have together and what it could look like going forward. So I thank you humbly for the opportunity to share a few words with you today. I thank you humbly for the opportunity to present this, and certainly available for any questions you may have, both now or in the future.
Okay, Grant, thank you. Any questions to the board? Commissioner Cupid?
No questions, just a comment in that I appreciate the level of passion that you have about serving all of your students during this time. You're right, we are in a health crisis, but it's impacting us in so many ways. One thing is to provide access to continue to operate the school, but it's another thing to meet the student, the whole student, so that they can continue to be able to function in the academic setting. And so I know this was a very quick presentation, but I do appreciate it being comprehensive in addressing the varied aspects of the impact that COVID-19 is having on our community and particularly our young people. Thank you for your thoughtfulness.
Commissioner Burrow.
Good morning, Grant. You said there were 9,000 students, 9,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And faculty and staff, or what number?
Just over 1,200. Between 1,200 and 1,400, I forget the number by the day.
Okay. And your funding typically is all from City of Marietta and/or any state funding?
Yeah, so you said typically, I'll clarify just for a moment. Yes, that is a correct answer, state and city as well. I'll also say that relative to this, Commissioner, relative to, we have been, the other funding we have been getting to supplement some of this is both donations in the community as well as donations to some different philanthropic partners. So generally speaking, state, local, in this situation, there's some other agencies where we've been able to solicit funding as well, prior to now.
Okay, but have you received other money from the state or the city for supplies?
We have. So the previous COVID-related monies that we received federally were 1.6 million.
Okay, thank you, you do a great job.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So I see you've got about 1.75 million for Chromebooks. What is your plan to replace those Chromebooks once the CARES funds run out? Because you're going to be setting a precedence here to be supplying your students with Chromebooks, so how are you going to fund that in the future?
Yeah, so quite candidly, we already have gone down this road. We are prepared to pivot in Marietta to a one-to-one. So what we learned in this situation, what we did initially when, March 16th, is we immediately took the next several weeks to issue Chromebooks, laptops, for those who are not familiar, to every child who may have needed one. Quite candidly, philosophically, whether it's a pandemic such as this, where schools may open and close, or whether it's just good for teaching and learning and allowing kids to be engaged, we're going to pivot long-term to a full one-to-one, where every child would have access. And right now, quite candidly, we're still making decisions about whether that's grade six through 12, or whether that's grades three through 12. But our plan is to pivot. What this allows us to do, we have dished out, as I said, over 3,000 Chromebooks to date. We are prepared to use SPOLOST funds that we receive to fill any additional need that we have relative to what this money won't cover or what we may have going forward in a one-to-one initiative.
Okay, and that's giving me pause because I think we all remember what happened back in 2006, '07 with the books with the schools. And then also, are you setting criteria as far as who's receiving these devices as for right now, since you don't have devices to give to everybody for the one?
Well, I'll be honest with you, ma'am. We pulled every available Chromebook we had in a building out to give to kids. So as a result of that, we've got to make sure that we've got Chromebooks back in schools where they may need it. So again, it varies a bit by grade, but quite candidly, when we were trying to fill an immediate need where I knew kids wouldn't be able to connect to their teacher, I basically said, start dismantling every, any and all Chromebook carts that we have. And this will allow us to make sure that we continue to issue those to kids who need them, particularly during digital learning now, but also allows us to backfill what we need going forward.
Mr. Schott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question to piggyback on what Commissioner Burrow asked you. The money that you've already received, how was that spent?
So in part, there's a variety of ways. And I can share with you that nothing that we used, have intended to use that money for, either have used it or will use it for, have gone towards anything on this list here. So I'll give you just an example, one small example. In order for us to distribute meals out in the community, it costs us $21,000 a week above and beyond where we get federal reimbursement for meals. So whether it's setting up our digital learning program, which we did previously with the CARES, with the COVID money, whether it's paying bus drivers and staff to distribute meals, there have been a variety of expenses that we've had, quite candidly, that we quickly burned through. I gave you an example that we got $36,000 from our community to fund Wi-Fi hotspots. The remainder of that money that we got, the remainder of that expense, we pulled out of the original COVID money. Another example, the buses that we would take out into the community. We had both the cost of outfitting those buses with a Wi-Fi hotspot, as well as paying staff to do that, that we use those monies for that. So I mean, quite candidly, it hasn't been cheap. And I mentioned earlier, $6,000 a week that we needed prior to closing our schools. We used, we're using that money to pay for that. So there's been a variety of things. What I can tell you is that that money is completely separate from this request here. And certainly, I'm willing to, to whatever degree you want, outline all the expenses that we have.
Okay, thanks.
This is education for me, Dr. Rivera. Are you funded through the city, through the taxes that the city levies on its residents?
Yes, sir. So city funds through, whether it's commercial real estate taxes or property taxes? Yes, sir.
So there's a separate line, I like for us, our Cobb County School District has a miller's rate associated with that. You have the same thing for the City of Marietta?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell me what the plan is for the options for parents and their kids starting in August?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to. So let me outline the plan, and then I'll keep all throughout this entire explanation, keep saying, unless we're directed otherwise by health experts, right? Which candidly is why I was on the phone outside in the parking lot right before I walked into here. So what we have offered to our families are two options. One is in-person, and again, that's based on the recommendation from health experts, saying that at this point, they believe it's safe to do such. We continue to watch those numbers by hour, by day, to determine whether or not we have to pivot. But until we get the, either directive or the suggestion that we should, we are offering to families in-person with a list of mitigation strategies, many of which become executed through here. So whether it's requirement of masks, taking up temperatures, cleaning the building, taking kids outside so they have more classes and more time outside as opposed to inside, adjusting the HVAC units so there's more airflow, adding additional filters, there's a whole laundry list of mitigation strategies that have been recommended to us that we've implemented in every way that we possibly could. The other option that we've offered to families is virtual. And that would be, that would be a commitment to live instruction each day, each week with a virtual teacher, so the kid never has to come in the building. I can give you guys an update. As of last week, the beginning of last week, we had 10% of our families who wanted to opt for virtual. As of the email I got this morning, it's now 20%.
So without going into too much of the details, would the virtual learning be, you have the streaming of the current class and session, or the teachers have to do a separate session for that?
Yeah, Commissioner, you're asking great questions. Chairman, the idea is that it could be both. So I'll give you an example. If we've got, if we've, and this is where the complexity of this is mind-numbing, right? The only thing harder than this is running the county. If we've got a situation, we have enough kids choose virtual in a given course, we're going to start to collapse a section, and teacher, teacher Mr. Voice is going to have a full-time virtual section, 20, 25, 30 kids, all virtual. But there may be a different scenario where I've got a second-grade class, where we can't collapse a class, because then we're going to put too many kids in a classroom and they can't appropriately social distance. In that situation, it could be 10 kids live, 10 kids in-person, 10 kids virtual. In that situation, it might be where we crack open the laptop and say, all right, we're going to do math together. It's really going to depend, and that's what we're trying to, and I promised our families over and over and over again, we're going to do everything we can to personalize this to 9,000 children to the best of our ability. So I think you'll find both. You'll find live instruction throughout the week where everything is 100% virtual, and then you'll find what we call asynchronous, where I've got 10 kids in front of me and 10 kids watching, and I'm just flipping a laptop around. So really, it will depend on how we shake the numbers out, and how these numbers continue to grow with families who prefer virtual.
Okay. And my last question is, on the Chromebooks, is this an acceleration to a purchase plan that you mentioned that you're using SPOLOST dollars, or is this a new requirement that you're going to respond to because of this request here?
Yeah, so the reality is that the SPOLOST dollars allowed us to have these Chromebooks. I mean, candidly, we need to have Chromebooks in buildings and in children's hands. We don't need to have the number that we had in buildings before, because we can appropriately send those home with kids and then have, rely on the kids to bring them back. But quite honestly, we have, we have pushed all these Chromebooks out, and we need to get to the right balance between what's in school and what's at home, and this will allow us to do that, because we pushed them all out to kids who had a need. You know, it was one of those like leadership moves where I trusted more on the values than on the operations. People said, well, what are you going to do when school resumes? I said, I don't know, but they need it right now. And the longer the adults sit around and try to answer that question, the more kids are going to fall behind. So let's go. So this allows us to not only get them in the hands of the kids who may still need them, replace those who may need to be replaced, but also equally allow us to pull some back, get them in our building so we can function. The teacher who says, hey, I need, I need to do an activity with a kid, and just like with the textbook, not everybody has a laptop. It allows us to have the appropriate balance in buildings, and also make sure the kids who need them have them at their home.
Okay, great. Well, what I planned, Chair, go ahead.
Yes, what age group has the laptops?
I was having a hard time hearing the question.
Yes, what grades have the laptops?
So what grades have the laptop? Right now, we, when we closed in March, we issued them pre-K through 12th grade.
Okay.
Admittedly, as we go forward, we're looking at where the appropriate balance is, you know, is that third, is it fifth, some other districts have done different ways, but when we panned them out, it was pre-K through 12th.
So you said 97% of students had laptops?
What I said was 97% of the children during the time that we were closed from March 16th to May 22nd, 97% of the kids would log into, would engage with their teacher and log into sessions and complete their homework.
Okay.
97% of the kids in the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do, Dr. Rivera, is that we're going to go to agenda prep. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Gamble, thank you.
Just one more question. You said that you were spending $21,000 a week on food. Aren't you being reimbursed for that?
Yeah, what I said is that these are, those are unreimbursed costs. So the issue is not the food. The issue is paying drivers, paying cafeteria staff to come in and prepare the food so we can then in turn get it out. So we were running $21,000 of unreimbursed expense per week to, and that was totally separate from whatever we got relative to federal reimbursement for food.
Okay, because I'm confused, because I know for us, we're paying $7.50 per meal distributed back to nonprofits. That's why I'm surprised you're not being reimbursed per meal for being distributed.
Yeah, I can't, I'd be happy to provide any follow-up information. What I know is that there were incredible expenses, we're literally running bus drivers and bus routes out into the community. I think it would have been a lot cheaper for us if we had people come to us, but if they, I didn't want to make the assumption that if they couldn't afford, if they needed food, that they also assumed that they had transportation. So for us, there were a variety of other expenses that came with it, but I do know that was the cost per week on unreimbursed, completely separate from whatever we got from a federal meal reimbursement.
Was that during the March through the May end of school year?
Correct, March.
Because your staff, your cafeteria workers were being paid anyway, aren't they?
Well, so here's the dynamic, yes and no. So if our, our approach from an HR standpoint that we felt we could defend was that anybody who was a full-time employee was expected to come in and work. Anybody who was not full-time, we paid to come in and work. So our bus drivers are not full-time, they work 25 hours a week. So they do, they were going to get paid whether they came in or not. So in order for us to function, we had to, we had to pay them to come in. We did the same thing with our hourly cafeteria staff in order to execute that program. Anybody who was full-time, we said, basically, this is your job, please come in and support our kids.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do, Dr. Rivera, is when we have agenda prep, we'll consider the request for the funding, okay? And we'll be back to today with our approach.
Okay.
Thank you for coming today and being, for this very informed presentation, gave us a lot of food for thought. All right. Thank you for the great work you're doing there, doing you and your staff. The next one is Chris Ragsdale from the Cobb County School District. And for many of you out there, Chris is the superintendent of the Cobb County School District.
You can do it. It's easier for me to say. Hit the next one. You know what I mean? So first of all, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and present the proposal that we have submitted quite some time ago. You know, one of the, one of the challenges that we have, that we all have right now is making sure that we get out accurate information. And that is what we're attempting to do. What a lot of people unfortunately misunderstand is that we have the same information as they do. Pretty much, we get the information from the same sources that they do. So today, what I'm going to do is I'm going to present the proposal that we submitted to you, and then obviously, take any questions and kind of talk about the situation that we're in right now. Kind of just following up from Grant's presentation, you know, the, one of the things that we saw right out of the gate, I don't know if it's, if it's a sign that the last day of school was Friday, March 13th, as in Friday, the 13th, or not, but that has certainly taken on a different connotation now, moving forward. Every Friday, the 13th, I think you'll, you'll remember exactly where you were that day and what we were doing. So that being said, that was a situation and a decision that nobody could have prepared us to make. And I actually said when we left, I don't think we'll be back for the remainder of the school year, just from what the situation was expanding to and the decision-making information that we had to go on. That being said, we did take a minute. We partnered with Must Ministries. We immediately took all of our, all of the consumable food that we had in the cafeterias and partnered with them to get it out. And then we actually made the decision, once we analyzed the process, to get the food out to everyone, I think this morning, the numbers, 431,000 meals that we have this morning, the numbers, 431,000 meals that we have served. We identified eight sites for the parents to come to. And that was not diminished to only those or restricted, rather, to only those at those particular schools. Anybody could go to those schools as long as you had a student 18 years of age or under, and you got a week's worth of food. So 431,000 meals is a lot. And we also chose to continue that process throughout the summer. So even through the month of July that we're in, we're continuing that process. Now, we have obviously pushed back, as you've already seen, the start date for students to August 17th. We are still bringing back teachers for pre-planning starting July 27th. We felt that that was necessary to give us another two-week window to get any kind of training done for the teachers. And that's one, unfortunately, people like to, to start rumors and spread misinformation and disinformation. One of the, the decisions that is yet to be determined is exactly what teachers are going to be identified for virtual learning because we are also going to have two options for parents and students, face-to-face instruction, which will be as normal of a school day as possible. When we first started talking about reopening, the, the non-starter was if we were required to have social distancing on school buses. That's just not possible. So that being said, we are going to have as normal of a school day as possible with obvious modifications, hand sanitizing stations, we're looking to do disinfecting each night and those, those kinds of things that are over and above, if you will, and social distancing whenever possible. Now, that being said, the extra two weeks is needed to determine exactly who needs what training. Because one of the things that I committed to upfront, as you asked the question, we're going to have no teacher responsible for both virtual and in-class face-to-face instruction. That's, that's doing two jobs. That's not fair to the teacher. It's not fair to the kids. So we're going to identify those teachers that will be working in the virtual world and their location will be determined based on their situation. Obviously, we're going to have employees and teachers are the biggest category of those employees, if you will. We've got over 8,000 teachers. And there's going to be legitimate situations that those teachers need to be able to work remotely. One of the positives, there's very few, but one of the positives that have come out of this pandemic is we have been able to properly identify, just as every industry has, those positions that can successfully work remotely. Now, I know there's a lot of data out there and you can make data say whatever you want to want it to. But the fact of the matter is, there are virtual schools. We've got Georgia Virtual School. Matter of fact, Florida Virtual School is the largest school district in Florida. And, and that's saying something when you've got Miami Dade in the top five. So that being said, there's obviously a component of education that can be done virtually. For some students, they never skip a beat. They're kind of geared toward that, if you will. For other students, they excel much more rapidly in a face-to-face environment. I have done both and I understand the pitfalls of the virtual environment. But at the end of the day, if we're not able to open, and I say if, because that is still a possibility. I guess we should have done a conference call because I guess as soon as Janet got a phone with Grant, she called me or vice versa. So I don't know what the case is. But he's right. We are talking constantly with Janet. Janet, Dr. Janet Memark is the Director of Cobb Douglas Board of Health. Trent is superintendent down in Douglas County. And matter of fact, she said, you know, she wanted to set up a, a call with the four of us to just make sure we're synced up. Because what we have said all along is that we're going to be following the guidance and recommendation from state and local health officials. And that's what we're doing. So that being said, the numbers are quite concerning right now. And there, there is a chance that, you know, the, the word is going to come that based on the positive cases and the way the spread is going, you go back to the documents and the guidance that was provided by the State Department of Education. When you're in a moderate spread environment, that's totally different than when you're in a high spread environment. And if those numbers keep rising, then we're going to be in the category of high spread and that is totally different guidance from the State Department of Education and combined with DPH and, and the local health officials. So that being said, when we look at what we're proposing and what we have proposed to you for, for the funding we have requested, we have to be prepared for 100%, 113,000 students and 18,000 employees working remotely, whether it's teaching and learning, where you have teachers teaching remotely, students learning remotely. You know, when we closed on Friday, the 13th of March, I made the decision to pay everyone. I asked the board at the, at the next board meeting to approve funding to not only, well, to pay those employees that would not be working, such as ASP workers. ASP program is self-funded. So meaning if you don't have students in ASP paying to be in ASP, there's not money to pay ASP workers. That being said, this was a out-of-the-box solution because we needed to make sure that the employees of our organization, the largest employer in Cobb County, were taken care of. That's an economic impact if we didn't do that. So I'm very thankful to the board and very proud of the board for the decision that, that they made to do that. The proposal we have. So CTLS is acronym for the Cobb Teaching and Learning System. This is not a off-the-shelf purchase, if you will. This has been referred to by some as an ecosystem. I've not used that term a lot. Let's not say it's good, bad, or indifferent. But my background is technology. Okay. So what we have created has been the culmination of many years of purchases, many years of R and D, many years of working with multiple vendors. There is not a single vendor that we went to and said, we want to buy this or we want to create this. We have taken processes and procedures and basically combined and consolidated them into what we call CTLS. Now, CTLS is not a bunch of technology. So it's not based on devices. However, the remote option, you obviously have to have a device to take part in. Some other devices, though, are student response systems, for example, so that teachers are able to assess very quickly and digitally students in the classroom to be able to tell where they are individually. And that's the name of education right now is individual. You have to know exactly where each student is to make sure that you can move them to where they need to be. So the overarching infrastructure, if you will, of CTLS is made up, as you can see, from CTLS Assess, CTLS Teach, and CTLS Learn, and CTLS Parent. Go ahead, go to the next one. So on each slide, you'll notice that we have a quote. And those quotes are from actual employees of the district, whether they be teachers, principals, assistant principals, the like. And I'm not going to read those to you, but you can see what those are. So CTLS Assess basically is what I've just outlined as far as being able to assess students digitally and very quickly. This is not meant to take the place of a formative or summative assessment. However, it can be used for the formative assessment, if you will. Summative assessment at the end of the semester, at the end of the year, if you think of that. And then formative assessments are, are much more frequently given and gives the opportunity for the students to display mastery of the standards as they're being taught in the classroom. Go ahead and go to the next one. All right. So CTLS Teach. CTLS Teach is probably the most important component of CTLS, but probably will get the least amount of attention. And what I mean by that is within CTLS Teach is what we call the Learning Object Repository. Some people are just calling it acronym in education. We like acronyms. So it's the LOR, Learning Object Repository. There's over 700,000 pieces of resources currently in the LOR. And what those encompass is everything a teacher could use as a resource in teaching the class, whether it be whatever subject, they, they run the gamut. Let me give you a quick example of how this is different than the way we used to do it. About every seven years, you would come up with a timing of adopting a new textbook. And it's called textbook adoption. It's resource acquisition. We would spend 10, 15, 20 million dollars on a textbook adoption. And what that would entail is basically involvement from all stakeholders, being able to see what the options were, let's just say for math. All right. You're going to adopt a new math K-12 curriculum. We would pay that 10, 15, 20 million dollars. We would get the hardback text, none of which is cover to cover, covered in an academic year. And then you would get various things that the manufacturer of the textbook would say, we're going to give you this to you free. We're going to give you this piece of software free. And it was basically worth exactly what you paid for. Hardly ever, anybody used it. And, but it was deemed it was free. So it was kind of an enhancement, if you will. A lot of consumables, those kinds of things came with that. So what we did was we flipped the table, if you will, with the textbook companies and said, we're going to do business a different way. For the math, let's just stay on math. We're going to go to you and we're going to say, you know what? We like your geometry text and we're going to take chapters 10, 12, and 24. Thanks. Have a good day. When we purchase those resources, we're then going to do a process called meta-tagging. And that is basically just a fancy way to say, we're going to make every piece of those resources that we just purchased searchable by the teacher, whether it's by standard, by grade level, by subject, et cetera. So then those resources become available as one of the over 700,000 pieces of resources for teachers to choose from. So when they're creating the lesson plan, they're able to go into the LOR and go ahead and create those lessons plans based on specifically aligned resources. Now, one of the benefits of this process that has identified for us is a lot of companies say, oh yeah, all of our resources are aligned to Georgia standards. But what we've been able to find, fortunately and unfortunately, is the case that that's not necessarily true. Now, as you can probably imagine, that creates quite the problem for a class of students and a teacher as you're teaching to an individual standard, when in fact, the resource is not properly aligned, when the assessment that's given, such as the milestone, which are required to be administered by the state, that are properly aligned, well, that creates an issue. So that's one of the benefits that we have been able to come out of the CTLS process. All right. CTLS Teach. What's up here is a little bit different information. You can see the quote at the bottom. But what the five bullet points are above is something that is very unique to CTLS. And it's unique because these are recommendations, suggestions from individual teachers that have been incorporated into the actual product. So hardly ever do you find teachers being able to actually have direct input to the creation of educational curriculum, materials, et cetera, that are in the classroom. However, this is exactly what we did. So we took some of the things from the teachers and actually put them into production. And one of the things that I'll point out is quick access to IEPs, the fourth bullet. IEPs are, are Individual Education Plans with related to special ed. So special ed is included within CTLS. And that's very important to, to take note of. All right. Go ahead and next. CTLS Parent. We had a, a program called Picasso many, many years ago, that parents, quite honestly, could not get enough of because it allowed the parents to be able to see inside the curriculum, what was happening in the classroom. We've recreated that within CTLS Parent that's actually going live as we speak, that's giving the parents the access to the same resources that the teachers have access to. So the analytics behind the CTLS Parent will be when a parent logs in and sees their students, they can see not only where they are, but then the analytics is going to provide access based on the student's academic progress to resources we have to make available to the parents to be able to work with their students at home. And so the parent does not have to go through and search the over 700,000 objects. It's recommended on the backside so the parents don't have to do that search. They can have access to those digital resources to be able to utilize with their, with their students while at home. Okay. Next one. All right. So the CTLS Learn is basically what we're asking for today for the funding. All right. CTLS Learn has also been referred to as CTLS Student sometimes. So a CTLS Student, CTLS Learn. This is the actual learning management system, if you will. And what that means is that the students can have access to the virtual teaching that we'd be offering through the teachers that are going to be assigned to that role to be virtual teachers. So that being said, I think it was Chairman Boyce or maybe Commissioner Ott that asked the question, what, you know, was this already funded? Or is this going to be a new purchase based on the pandemic? And so the CTLS Learn portion is actually yes to both answers, both questions. And what I mean by that is, yes, CTLS Learn was already in design and was beginning stages of production. We have continued that production, but we're going to run out of funds, hence the request for the additional funds from you guys through the CARES Act funding. We have already planned to create it and to roll it out, just not this soon. It was in the final stage of the CTLS and it was always planned to go into production. But because of the pandemic, we have to have a very robust and scalable solution. Whether or not we start school, as we have said, and we're going to have anywhere from 20 to 30% expected enrollment in the virtual option, that's over 30,000 students. So regardless, if we start with two, or if we have to start totally virtual, and again, the numbers are going to have to dictate that. But we have to be, be, be prepared for 113,000 students to be online with CTLS so that they do not miss a beat with their teaching and learning. Now, once we come back into school, a lot of people will say, well, you, you did virtual learning the last six weeks of school. Yes, but. And the but is we received guidance that said no student's grade should be negatively impacted by remote learning for the last six weeks of school. So that was a totally different environment that we will start on August 17th. August 17th, there will be accountability. There will be grading and there will be accountability both for teachers and students. So we expect the same high level of teaching and learning to be going on as we do before, as we did before March the 13th, when we had 113,000 students in front of 8,000 tremendous teachers. That being said, we, we don't know what the future holds. So the request for funding is to complete the CTLS Learn portion, which is the final phase, which will basically finalize the learning management system portion of CTLS so that up to 113,000 students and beyond will be able to have access to that system. Now, I can foresee the same question coming that, that Grant got. What, have we received CARES Act money from the state and what do we do with it? The answer is yes. We received $16 million from CARES Act from the state. And we also received the same guidance from the DOE that said, you know, you can use this for whatever is coming or for whatever you need to be reimbursed for related to the pandemic. So as you have seen, we're experiencing a 10% budget cut. Thankfully, that turned 14%. But for us, that's still $62 million. So we had to cut $62 million out of our budget. $16 million went to help that and also help with the reimbursement of things, like I said, that, that we were paying employees for. As, as you asked Commissioner Gamble about the reimbursement for food, we did a little bit different approach where we had our food service employees preparing the food inside the school and we utilized volunteers in the drive-through process. But that being said, those employees were paid and they were reimbursed for the food. So there, there is many more expenses related to the pandemic, whether it be the budget cut or whether it be the reimbursables that, that far and beyond exceeded the 16 million. So the 8.1 and change that we're asking for is simply for the CTLS Learn completion and the acceleration of that completion. and the acceleration of that completion. We're requesting that funding to make sure that we have a robust system that stood up by August 17th so that students can have access to that system regardless if it's 113,000 or whether it's 30,000 or anywhere in between. So with that, the app, did you answer any questions?
Okay, thank you, Chris. Questions from the board? Mr. Gamberl.
So you made a statement that you were doing this to help coordinate with the milestone testing, yet on June 29th of this year, Governor Brian Kemp and School Superintendent Richard Woods are wanting to get rid of standardized testing. So what's going to be the benefit of having this portion in there if we're not going to be doing standardized testing?
So that's a great question. And I'm in support of everything, whether it's the governor's state superintendent request to diminish mandated state testing. That being said, though, a proper assessment is absolutely required in education. Assessing students so that we can check a box, whether it be for state or federal, absolutely not necessary. The proper assessment, though, is exactly what is within CTLS assess. And that allows us to conduct the formative assessments that allow the teachers to see individually where each student is. There was a graphic on one of the slides that showed students, that were not real information, but students in a red, yellow, green bar. And what that indicates is the mastery of standards that each assessment question was pertaining to. So the teacher can see exactly the student's level to which they have mastered the content of the standard. So that being said, it's much more productive for teachers to be able to administer the digital assessments for the students to have that immediate feedback. Again, the milestones, for example, milestones should be replaced with something that a district is already doing, if that's available. Now, if it's not, certainly the availability of the milestones for districts that are not doing that would certainly be beneficial. However, for us, we would much prefer to be able to do a number of formative assessments during the year, and then that creates that final content mastery report, if you will. Because having that information in the teacher's hands at a very regular interval immediately is accessible, so when a teacher administers that digital assessment formatively, that information and data of the results is immediately available right then. As soon as she or he submits that assessment, it's immediately disaggregated and available for them to utilize so that they can see, okay, for this particular standard, the entire class is dead on, we can move on. Or I've got a group of students that need some additional help and that's easily identifiable for that teacher to be able to move on with some and then catch those other students up very quickly. When we get back to school, that's going to be the tool that's utilized to be able for teachers to assess exactly what the gap has been created from the last six weeks of the previous school year. We know that that gap's going to be present, it's going to be different for each individual student, and that's why it's so important to have individualized data for those teachers to be able to utilize in class.
So how long is it going to be to design? Because we're about five weeks out from August 17th start date. And I know, looking at your other agenda item, is this going to be up and ready and running by August 17th?
Yes, the answer is yes. The reason is we have basically moved all of the funding that was for different enhancements within CTLS, and we combined that funding for CTLS learn. And that's what I made the statement earlier about, the funding is going to run out. So yes, we have designed it, yes, it can be stood up by August 17th. What we're going to see is one of the biggest funding requirements for the 8.1 million dollars, over half of it, matter of fact, is going to content. So the learning object repository that contains the over 700,000 items of resources for teachers to utilize, that is what's going to make it a much more robust system is being able to increase that level of content, K-12. It's, you know, a lot of students take advantage of virtual schools to be able to do either extra or just do different things when they get to the high school level. So it's real easy, or not real easy, it's easier to be able to apply that virtual setting into a high school environment. It takes a much more focused and laser-focused approach, if you will, to get that K-8 environment. A lot of schools actually refrain from doing any kind of digital content, K-3, because it's just very difficult. And that is true. However, we need to be prepared for 113,000 students to be at home and not in school. And so we can't ignore the fact that there are K-3 students that are going to be at home that still need that level of teaching and learning they've come to expect from Cobb County School District. So yes, it will be stood up by August 17th, but the money will run out greatly before we get to the level of content that we need.
And so on your tech support, I know it comes out to about $1,380,000 for that, which comes out to about $9.18 for a child. But if, my understanding is if you use the D2L software that is currently out there that I know a lot of students transferred to once the pandemic hit, we're talking about 50 cents to a dollar per student for technical support. So why $10 and with it being that expensive and being this close in time, why aren't you just switching to D2L?
Well, again, so D2L, as you identified, is an off-the-shelf, kind of like Canvas. A lot of colleges and universities utilize those platforms for learning management system. However, what those platforms don't have is the content and the focus on such a large spectrum of students. We're a K-12 district. When you get into the colleges and university level, and a lot of K-12 schools are also taking advantage of Canvas, excuse me, but at the same time, that's the shell, if you will. So what we have done is we have taken all of our technology applications and put them under one umbrella. So one of the common themes that you maybe saw in the quotes on the bottom of each slide was one-stop-shop. So what we've done is created that environment, that ecosystem, if you will, where all the technology applications are under that one umbrella of CTLS. So you don't have to administer an assessment, go into one system, administer the assessment, get the data back, put the data into a spreadsheet, disaggregate it, see what you need to do, then go into another system to identify some of the resources that you maybe want to use, and then go into another system to actually input those grades so that the parents can see those grades electronically through the website. So what we have created is basically an ecosystem of multiple technologies that are not from one single vendor. Like, for example, the over 700,000 objects in the lore, those are from multiple vendors, multiple, multiple vendors. So that's what makes this more complex to support because the support level is not just, you have a database of questions that when you call customer service, you say what you want, they type the question in, here's a canned response because that's all the questions that can be part of this system. This system is a very dynamic system, meaning that it's ever-changing. So to be able to support that and have the proper level of support for our users, that's why it's so much more expensive to support on an ongoing basis.
So this is going to be custom only to Cobb County and will not be sold to any other school districts, then?
Correct, because there's not a single vendor that's taking part in it. Now, all of the vendors, you know, the intellectual property that's been used to create this certainly is theirs, not ours. So they can remarket that if they want to, but there is not a CTLS that can come from one single vendor. So to answer your question, no, a vendor cannot resell a CTLS package. Now, they could go out and try to create it like we have done, certainly, but the flip side of that is we will be in the situation to be able to share the contents of CTLS with other school districts. Matter of fact, I've had conversations with other superintendents of smaller districts to be able to latch on to CTLS and be able to utilize that. That's kind of proof of concept mode, but we have to make sure that we have the technology infrastructure built out. Most of it is in the cloud so that as long as you have the proper bandwidth at your location, whether it be in a school or at home, then there would be no reason why you as a student anywhere in the state could not take advantage of CTLS if we get to that point. Right now, we're focused on Cobb County School District, 113,000 students.
So in the schools, are you doing anything with like the MERV three filters, UVC on your HVACs? What are you doing in your individual classroom? Because I'm not seeing any of that in your request.
Correct. None of those examples that you just talked about are in this request. This is simply to make sure we've got a teaching and learning system for 113,000 students ready to go. In our general fund budget, that has not been presented to the board, so I want to kind of be cautious, but at the same time, kind of give you an insight to look at it because I know this is not being televised or anything. I know, I'm just kidding. So we're going to identify an amount of money in our budget to be utilized for exactly those types of, whether it be new technologies or whether it be just PPE, for example. We're going to have multiple millions of dollars in the general fund budget set aside for COVID-related, COVID-19-related purchases that are unforeseen. So yes, we are looking at all technologies to be able to make the classroom environment much more safe than it currently is today because if we're going to be in an environment where we have to have literally a person clean, the custodians can only do so much. We have gone through over the summer and utilized our maintenance and operations team to go in and disinfect all of the schools. We're doing the same thing on school buses. The bus drivers can do that on their own bus, but it's going to take an enormous amount of effort to do that in every single classroom. Now, we can't, we do have the foggers and the disinfecting solutions like that, but we have identified and will set aside money, assuming the Board of Education approves that budget that we'll be submitting tentatively this Thursday.
And again, personally, I don't know why you guys are going with foggers. I think the UVC works better and it's all the time, but I know.
I don't disagree, but we'll be testing some new technologies and doing proof of concept, so hopefully we'll be able to identify some new solutions. We're actually looking at multiple companies that have patented technology that is directly related to killing viruses and those kinds of things. Because again, let's assume that the day comes when we're not in a pandemic and we're not totally focused on COVID-19, there's still flu, there's still all of the other viruses that in an elementary school especially, run rampant. You know, we saw last year and the year before, schools not in Cobb, but schools across the country have to close for stomach flu because they had, you know, 40, 50% of the student population absent because of that illness. So there are things that we can invest in to make the overall environment much more germ-free to a degree, and we're looking at those. Not in a position to say exactly what they are or how it'll work, but because we don't know yet.
Right, and so transitioning to that, the same day that the MDJ ran the article that you were going to be coming in front of the board, they also ran an article that the school board approves a new Pebblebrook facilities, one month of spending. So what changes have you made to this to address the today that we're in now? Because it sounded, I mean, it sounds like we're just taking a typical school and we're going to build a new school. Why are we doing that knowing that COVID's here, it's not going to go away? How are you making changes so that we're going to build a new facility, assuming we're going to go back full-time and not stay virtual? Why are we doing this now with those answers not being out there?
Yeah, so.
Or are you making changes to make this more of a COVID, more spaced-out?
Right.
Facility?
So a couple of points to that. So first, the project at Pebblebrook is not a new school per se, it's a rebuild. So just like Osburn campus, we will be demoing some buildings, replacing those with bigger buildings, multi-story situations, that kind of thing. Every classroom on the campus, both at Osburn and Pebblebrook, that has just been approved, will not be replaced. So there are some buildings that are new and will be kept. The proof of concept that we will be utilizing will be done on a much smaller basis, probably in elementary school, so that we can work out, okay, what is this technology? Does it work? Does it do what it says it's going to do? And then that will be able to be rolled out. The technology that we're looking at is not prescriptive in its changes to a construction as Pebblebrook, as you just mentioned. A lot of the things are put in place with the expectation it's going into an existing building. So the technology there is not a requirement of a change to a construction process other than the cost of whatever that equipment would be. Quite honestly, we can't afford to build, we already build our high school classrooms much larger square footage-wise than the state requirement. So all of our classrooms are larger than the state requirement square footage-wise. That being said, there's still not enough room to take the 20 to 30 students in a classroom at a high school level and be able to separate those socially distanced at six foot like we see here in this room. We will be making those additions and modifications that we'll be instituting throughout the schools at the new facilities as well, but currently there's not a requirement other than, you know, if money was no object and we could build with all of the enhancements to do social distancing, but we just can't. So the funding is not there for that. So we will be retrofitting, if you will, into the new construction, any new technology that's identified to help in that COVID-19-related experience.
Commissioner Burrow.
And the 16 million that you've already received, wasn't some of that PPE and equipment and classroom?
I mean, you could answer yes to all of that because the 16 million, when you spread it out, you could have injected some of that into every category you just mentioned. So we could say, yes, the 16 million is part of that money set aside, whether it be PPE, the UV technology, et cetera, that we just talked about. The 16 million, just quite honestly, is a drop in the bucket of a $1.2 billion annual budget. So, but that being said, yes, some of that 16 million will be the funding that's set aside. Some of the 16 million will be utilized in the reimbursement for the expenses incurred from paying the employees for what they were doing during the COVID-19 pandemic for the end of the school year. So yes is the answer to your question.
Chris Cupid?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to speak with John Floresta when.
He's in the room, so don't talk bad about him.
Okay, oh, I can see. Thank you. And I'm going to share with you some observations or perhaps some concerns that I had addressed with him that I'm not hearing being addressed today. I certainly can understand the need to have a robust online learning system and can appreciate it being individualized, especially since students will probably, students learn at an individual rate already, but particularly with response to COVID, students may be at different learning places, even more so. But something that I've become aware of and particularly concerned about are the number of students that have lacked technology to be able to continue learning when COVID hit. I personally have seen or visited some complexes in the district where you've seen multiple students huddled around or waiting for a laptop. Conversation with one family where students had classes going on, but there are multiple kids in the home and just one phone that the parent had for a child to use. So just even alternating that phone with the children resulted in some kids not being able to learn. You have students who may have had technology and even in those circumstances, where having Wi-Fi was a challenge. And so I'm hoping that I'm going to get a different response from you because I was not comforted by the response that I heard. But my concern or observation was we have students that cannot benefit. But my concern or observation was, we have students that cannot benefit from having a digital learning system when they don't have access to laptops or Wi-Fi to be able to access this. What is being done to address that? Because I'm concerned about all of our dollars going towards a digital system without any conversation about the students who are already being left behind and will continue to be left behind and have a more inequitable learning experience without that being addressed. And I have not heard anything in this conversation to help me understand what, what's going to be done with those students.
Yeah, so one of the reasons that I did not address that in this conversation, that's not part of this proposal. We certainly delivered thousands of Chromebooks to families in need. We actually used our school's social workers to identify those families in the greatest need, so that we knew exactly the families that we were identifying to provide the technology to. We got to a point where we were using both funds through the Cobb Schools Foundation that many businesses donated to, greatly appreciated that, that effort and all of those donations. We also utilized and have identified and continue to utilize devices within the district to be able to check out. The devices that were issued through the Cobb Schools Foundation are actually the students to keep. That's the way the fundraising was done, and that was to provide them with the device. The devices from the district are obviously on a checkout basis, because it's a gift to taxpayer funds if you, if you allow them to keep those devices. So, that being said, a district, we're the second-largest district in the state of Georgia with 113,000 students. There's no way that we can afford to not only go with a one-to-one solution for every student, but the support of it. One-to-one has been a phrase utilized for years and years and years in school districts. We still have some school districts attempting to do one-to-one. And while the Chromebooks are an example of how technology has been reduced and priced dramatically, the, the fact still remains of the support, because just as you mentioned, those without access. So, if you went to a one-to-one solution, for example, your failure rate on a daily basis is going to be there, regardless of what you agree to that percentage is. So, if it's 1%, is that an acceptable failure rate? And how are you going to accommodate that failure rate, whether you're remote or whether you're in person? A lot of school districts have gone to the, to the point of having a device that is capable of being checked out to the student, but it stays in the classroom at the lower grade levels. That's certainly an option that we have looked at. But as far as access, as far, access, as far as high-speed internet, we do not have the ability to provide, to make sure that every family that needs high-speed internet access, we can provide that. We, we can't, we're not in the position to be able to do that. I do note that many of the companies, Comcast, I know, has, for this pandemic, been able to provide high-speed internet access for families of, of lower income at a greatly reduced cost. So, it's going to take partnerships for large school districts such as Cobb to be able to make sure that that access is there. The reason we're focused on the, the system is because if you focus on the devices without having a system, that's cart before the horse. The why has to be answered before you say what technology you need. And the why is a teaching and learning system to be able to deliver the high level of teaching and learning everyone has come to expect within Cobb. So, that being said, the devices are being addressed. Will it be a total one-to-one solution that the school does? No, it will not be. But we will still be maintaining the devices for those families in need. And initially, we focused on high school at the end of last year, for obvious reasons. But we have gone down into middle and elementary, and we will be continuing to utilize the Cobb Schools Foundation to be able to have both the donation portion of that, but also the devices within the school district that are going to be identified and utilized for that purpose.
How did you deliver education over the past two or three months?
How have we? So, through CTLS, and it's just been, what we've identified, much as Grant said earlier, you know, there are some things that worked great, and there are some things that just didn't. One of the things that we would have never implemented with a strategy that we had to is we leave on Friday, flip a switch, and everybody is on virtual learning Monday. That's just not how you implement that. So, it has been, unfortunately, and fortunately, a learning experience where we've identified some of the hurdles that we need to overcome. But that's what drove the ask for the proposal that's in front of you today, is we realized very quickly that the number of resources and content available needed to be dramatically increased to support 113,000 students and 8,000 teachers. And that's the primary cost within the proposal. Again, over 50% is for content. So, how did we? The same way we will move it forward, it's just, it wasn't as robust as we needed for 113,000 students.
So, if you provided digital learning over the past two or three months, what percentage of your students were logging into CTLS?
We felt very confident with the numbers at 87%.
Okay, so then perhaps only 13%, not all of your students need access to technology?
Well, you really can't say that, because again, the, the method of, not method, but the accountability was not there. Had the accountability been there, that, you know, if you were not happy or happy with your grade on March the 13th, you had to engage and learn, we feel very confident that number would be much higher. However, because a lot of kids realize that I'm good with my grade, I can work to increase it, but I can't work and decrease it. That, that affected unfortunately, a lot of kids being engaged for the last six weeks of school.
So, there were some students who are not continuing their education?
Correct.
Because they knew their grades would not be impacted, but yet 87% were still logging in?
Correct.
Okay. For me to support a digital learning system, there has got to be effort to close that technological gap. And if you're telling me that you've relied on in the past and will rely on moving in the future, and a system that requires hardware, to me, that hardware is the horse, and this, and this is the cart. You know, learning can be done rudimentarily, and this I see could be an augment to a system. I don't know the system that Commissioner Gamble referred to, to be able to do something. I don't know how that was utilized, but it does look like there are options. My concern is continuing to, to exacerbate not only academic, but a digital divide amongst our students, where you're going to have students continue to fall behind. And I'm not hearing from you a commitment towards an effort to ensure that that's going to be closed.
Well, as I mentioned, the Cobb Schools Foundation is going to be the vehicle, as well as identifying additional devices within the district if needed. And the reason I say if needed is because we actually did not give out all of the Chromebooks that were requested. Quite honestly, we had families that just did not come to get the device. So, I feel very confident that we have met the need, and we will continue to meet the need. But again, it's, it's our mission statement, is one team, one goal, student success. It's going to take every member of the team, and the business community is a huge member of this team. Because again, 18,000 employees and 113,000 students, it's, it's a, you know, it's comparable to in the bay turning a jet ski versus turning a battleship.
I can only.
It doesn't turn quickly.
Yes, I can only imagine.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I was going to piggyback off of Commissioner Cupid's question. So, essentially, doing, doing simple math, we've got 113,000 students, we know 41% of them are on free or reduced lunch, which means we're going to assume that they're going to need assistance with some sort of device and hot spots. Using Dr. Rivera's numbers, essentially, we're going to need over $16 million just to give 41% of these students devices, so that they can access the, the platform. In addition, we would need another $25 million just to give them hot spots, if that helps you, Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, and then, and there could be partnerships. I mean, we talked about business partnerships for laptops, there could be partnerships explored for the hotspot. In fact, I had a company reach out to me and, that is currently working and trying to provide free Wi-Fi in the district, just from conversations that I've had with them. But I would love to see some level of creativity, particularly to go towards the southwest side of the district, where we know there are going to be more acute needs than other areas of the county. And if you had Wi-Fi hotspots that were in an area where you may have the bulk of your students, then you're not necessarily looking at a one-off throughout the county, which could multiply costs. There are pockets within the county that have, that can be targeted, and I think can, you can have some economies of, of scale. And so, again, as much as I see the benefit of this, I'm looking to see what you're going to do to ensure that inequity is not going to be exacerbated by putting an assistant without ensuring there's technology in the stu, in the hands of all students. We all, I heard from you and I heard from Superintendent Rivera, the possibility that all kids could be home. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. So, I, I would like to think that we are considering that worst-case scenario, but yet are looking at a way for all students to be able to continue their learning. I also have a question about what's being done at the school to respond to testing and screening and PPE for students. Can you talk about their plan for that?
Yeah, so we're very fortunate to have received the, the digital touch-free thermometers from the state and a large supply of PPE. Well, I say a large supply. To, to the average person, it's, it's going to seem a greatly large supply, but when you're talking to 113,000 students, it's not that much. That being said, we are strongly recommending following the guidance from the state and local health, strongly recommending face coverings, masks for students, and expecting them for staff. You know, again, we're expecting our teachers that are going to be in the face-to-face environment to be teaching. So, that's, that's why the recommended, recommendation was carried out in that manner. I know a lot of information was incorrectly conveyed, but, you know, when we start looking at what the school is going to look like PPE-wise, that's why I said that we have set aside multiple millions of dollars, we will set aside, assuming the budget is approved by the board. Multiple millions of dollars to be utilized for those types of expenses. We've also worked with Janet, Dr. Memark, to be able to provide additional PPE if needed. She's also committed to hiring and placing within schools individuals to be able to help with contact tracing. A lot of people are not understanding that the process by which students and staff will ask to be at home for 14 days is actually dictated by the DPH. So, for example, if a student is in a classroom, comes back positive, you'll have a seating chart, everyone in that room will, or that's been around the student for less than six feet, greater than 15 minutes, they will have to be out for 14 days. That being said, we're not going to be in the situation to say, okay, everyone in that same class is out for 14 days, including the teacher. The teacher may or may not have been one of those people that, that has been at high risk and has to be out for 14 days. So, that's going to be determined by that process. No, it's not going to be easy. So, you know, the, the students that will be out for those 14 days will then have to be inserted into the virtual option. So, that's, that is going to be a process that we're going to have to get through. And I don't think anybody can say, we got an awesome plan. Everybody's got a good plan until, you know, the, the first swing takes place. So, that being said, you know, that's, we're going to have to get down that path, and that's going to be unfortunately, the new normal for some time. We're, we're obviously not planning for that to be the new normal forever. But the process will be dictated, and will be followed by a DPH and local public health about who, whether it be the teacher and students, or whether it be the students just around that particular individual, because there's also the possibility, there could be multiple positives. And I will say this, I believe that there should be some credit for, for face coverings. And, and what I mean by that is currently, when the process is looked at and the contact tracing is done, the question is not asked, did that person have a face covering on? It's, it's kind of a moot point, if you will. So, I believe that, that we can do some, some better guidance, if you will, on what that process would entail. Because again, if you get to that level and there is a face covering that, that is there on, on that individual, whether it be a student, teacher, or what have you, well, then that person, according to what the face coverings do, should not necessarily have to be out for 14 days. At least some credit could be applied. Currently, there is no credit. So, whether you have a face covering, whether you don't have a face covering, you're going to be out for 14 days if you're in that contact tracing element. Yes, it's going to be very difficult, the contact tracing piece of that. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about it, it's going to be difficult. But it's, it's what we're faced with, and we'll, we will continue to, to follow that guidance and do what we need to do.
Understood. Will students be required to wear masks?
Not required, it's strongly recommended and expected of staff.
Okay, well, if a student desires to wear a mask, will the school provide masks for students?
We have a limited supply of PPE for students. We also have, and we're ordering, PPE for staff. So, there is a limited supply of cloth face covering, so they could be washed and those kinds of things, but we do not have an endless supply. So, yes, is the answer to that question. But, there's a but after, is that, you know, we don't have an endless supply.
So, there's enough, is there enough for each student to have one?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Okay.
We, we need to really stay on the topic here. All right, this is school board issues. So, if you have any questions about the CTLS, that's where we need to come on, because we have some other items to discuss this morning.
Okay, I think this is all a discussion with respect to CARES Act funding, which covers COVID.
But this only, this is only, he's only asking for money for the CTLS, not about anything else. That'd be a separate ask, and he's not asking for that right now.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. We've had broad discussion with respect to this conversation with both superintendents, but if you want to limit my ability to ask, to continue to ask questions regarding things that are of matter of concern to the public with how we're going to spend these dollars, then I will yield my time to whatever question you feel is more pertinent.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, you have any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. We've been here about an hour and a half now, and I, I was, we've got four different things I wanted to ask you, but I think three of them probably would have been avoided with what I'm going to talk about in the first one. All these questions and everything we've asked is what your board does. It's not what this board is supposed to be doing. I mean, there are concerns, the public has concerns and all those things, but there is a forum where the public is allowed to question those things and ask your board, ask you. I think that all of this would have been avoided. Every city, everybody that has come and asked the county for money, with the exception of folks with some food, is either for, to pay employees or PPE. Now, you, you talked multiple millions, and I understand your board hasn't seen yet. It would seem to me that the better way to, I mean, I don't really have an issue with the number, okay? That's not the issue. I think it would have been better to come to us, asking for the multiple million dollars for the PPE and those resources that you say you maybe, you need an extra couple, many millions to get PPE for all students. There would be no questions here on this board about all D2L or whatever. I mean, and I'm, I'm certified teacher, okay? I think that the, the better route to go is to go to your board and their budget for the learning system, which is a function of education, and come dust for the multiple millions plus more, to, for the PP and all those things, that there is no question that CARES Act funds. I mean, you need both. It's just a matter of which pot of money is going to pay for which one. I think that how many, what percentage of students need devices and testing and all that other stuff is important, but not to us. It's, our role is to distribute this money, and we want to give you and the myriad of schools whatever money we can out of the 113,000. whatever money we can out of the 132 million to keep your staff and your students safe. And if it takes $8.1 million to do that, then so be it. But I think that it would be easier to justify to the public, the feds, and everybody else if we spend $8.1 million to buy you as much PPE and protection devices and additional staff for the contact tracing and everything else.
Okay. Commissioner, let me run the commission, let me run the meeting here, Commissioner Cupid. Let me run the meeting, Commissioner Cupid. All right, I'm chairman.
Chairman, I'm just telling you, you are not being, you are not-
I was about ready to emphasize your point to him. So let me run the meeting.
Okay.
So my point is, I would rather see a request for PPE than for a learning system.
Okay, all right.
That's where I'm going, Mr. Chairman. And I did not interrupt any other commissioners, and I don't appreciate being interrupted in my question time.
All right, I think-
All right, so-
If it's all laid out, Commissioner, Mr. Ragsdale, I appreciate your time this morning.
Well, let me take a moment to respond. So because of what I heard you say, you have much preferred a different proposal. So we made the choice to present this proposal to you because this is a finite amount of money that we can identify. This is a direct need based on the pandemic. This is a result of the pandemic is what we're asking for. The PPE and the multiple millions I've identified in the budget is a flexible amount. And quite honestly, you don't have the time for us to say, hey, here's what we need today, but we might come back. And so I want you to hold some of that 132 million in case we need to come back. That is better served from our budget to where we have control of that. While we are going to identify an amount of money for the budget, there is nothing preventing me from going back to the Board of Education to say, we need approval to utilize some fund balance for additional PPE requirements that have come up. And maybe it's not PPE, it's the UV technology or the disinfecting solutions and those kind of things. So that's why we have made the proposal to the Board of Commissioners for a portion of the CARES Act money is a direct result of the pandemic, so.
Well, I can assure you, this conversation will be continued later on during agenda prep. So thank you for your information, Mr. Ragsdale. Very well presented, and thank you for your time today.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item for work session is Ms. Roberts providing information on the Community Stakeholder Need Assessment Survey connected by the Cobb County CDBG.
So we conducted a needs assessment survey to follow up as of right now on the ongoing pandemic. So the survey was two surveys, one for the general public, one for nonprofits. It was open from June 5th until June 19th. The nonprofit organizations, we had a total of 47 responses in the surveys, and then we're going to go over the nonprofit survey first. The nonprofit survey was highly opinionated, so I had to summarize some of their responses. But as you see, from question one, the COVID-19, how has it impacted your organization's ongoing service needs? Some of the responses were emotional support, rent and mortgage, food assistance, no income, influx of homelessness. So these were some of the items that were pulled out from the survey responses. Second question for the nonprofit organizations, how do you anticipate the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak will affect families and individuals? Unable to buy food, everything will be affected, reduction of income, job loss, housing cost assistance, so, and greater need for food and housing stability. Question three, as the spread of COVID-19 persists throughout the year, what are your immediate concerns for carrying out your mission, the nonprofit's mission? Some said supporting families, access to services, food, housing, health and safety, sufficient funds, and increased homelessness. Question four, if additional government funding to combat COVID-19 becomes available, where would you want to see those resources directed? Answers from respondents, 57% said food programs, 46% said sheltering, other programs, sheltering programs. And it was about 82% that said other, and they specified which other. But of the other, some of the things that were noted was resource for PPEs, operational support, education, health and safety, and rental assistance. Also, program support was mentioned several times. Question five was what additional food and shelter assistance do you anticipate needing to recover from COVID-19? Respondents reflected food and shelter, more affordable housing, resource for PPE, stockpiles of food, short-term housing and PPE supplies and shelter assistance. I will summarize both surveys at the end, but we're going to go into the general public now. The general public, we had 118 responses, and it was a combination of opinionated questions and just comes from yes, no questions. How have you been affected by COVID-19, mental health, shelter in place, loss of employment, grocery bill tripled, social activities curtailed, loss of work hours, continuing to work from home, and lack of education? Do you have a job? 59% said yes, they have a job. Only 5.9 said they've been unemployed. 11% said no, just recently unemployed, and 24% said they were retired. If you have a job, how have your work conditions changed due to COVID? Majority said working from home, remote work, learning, which is expected. This is the other. If you other, please specify. Well, this is the data for that, and you'll see that the percentages, and other is only 13.4%, a majority is work from home, which is like 55% of the survey population of responses. Some of the other items noted, the responses, reduction in resources, retired, volunteer, instructor, partly teleworking from home, seasonal work, leave of absence, these are some of the responses. So what is your primary concern at this time for the general public? Majority said health and safety, to be expected. Next was education, mental health, that has come up a lot during this survey, and unemployment and unemployment. Those were the top four items that were kind of the themes throughout the survey. This is the data for the survey. Health and safety was 43%, unemployment 18%, mental health 27%, and education 28%. Some of the other, please specify, comments noted by respondents, they were worried about getting the virus, access to exercise, financial losses, watching small businesses suffer, state and county budget cuts, these are just some of the responses from the survey. What need have you seen arise due to COVID-19 pandemic? Job loss, mental health for children, enforcement of social distancing, food insecurity, financial assistance, cheaper internet, lack of leadership, and lack of cleaning supplies. And for the general public, what is the primary concern personally once this pandemic ends for you? Kind of the same for themes, health and safety, education, mental health, and employment Some of the other, please specify, comments were availability of a vaccine to everyone, that there will be increasing second wave of COVID-19 cases and deaths, stock market, lack of health insurance, will the economy recover in the near future, and statewide county budget cuts. For the general public, what is your primary concern once the pandemic ends for your, ends for your community? Health and safety again was the highest category, unemployment, education, and then mental This is just the data from the survey responses. And then the other, please specify, availability of vaccine, the tax revenue, economy, business continuity, and returning to freedom and liberty. So how would you like to see the COVID-19 stimulus funds CARES Act use? Responses included housing, food, and utility for education sensibly, help individuals who lost job, skills training, food options, better childcare, supporting digital learning, job creation, helping the needy, and just mental health access is some of the themes that were noted. So to summarize kind of the responses for the survey, on the general public side, the main themes that came out of the survey, health and safety, education, mental health, unemployment were highly rated as seen over and over and over from response, from respondents. And how would you like to see the COVID-19 stimulus funds used? Relief funds, food options were the highest noted by survey respondents. Housing and utility expenses was next, and small business assistance was at 11%, and then schools was at 11%. On the nonprofit side, funding, really nonprofit funding assisting with their operational costs was at 23.9%. Food was at 17%, 17.3%, and mental health 13%. And then for the nonprofit aspect, where should additional resources be directed? Food programs 57%, sheltering programs 46.8%, and other, which is nonprofit funding, PPE, rental assistance, and mental health was about 82%. Any questions?
Ms. Rock, Ms. Cupid, Ms. Robles.
We have, I've had a lot of emails from folks who were having trouble with their unemployment. And I noticed some of the, on the questionnaire, some of the responses were, you know, loss of job and unemployment and that kind of stuff. So we have been referring them, since that's Department of Labor and is a state agency, have been referring them to the state and their state representative or senator to help them with the customer service line getting in directly to the Department of Labor. So I just want to make that comment because I know that's what's part of this, and with it being state-funded, you know.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Thank you.
So in your professional opinion, Dr. Robert, in your, in your area of expertise and the areas that you focus on at CDBG, where do you see the potential need for additional funding using CARES legislation?
I think the second priority is going to be that rental assistance piece. But I also think you have to garner the need, because you could set aside a million dollars. But if that million dollars doesn't get spent expeditiously, then it's pointless. So I think we need to be cautiously optimistic about what we set aside for this funding, and how realistic is it to get spent by your timeline? That's one of the things you've got to consider. Because if you do housing, there are other things that you have to consider with housing, too. If it's housing someone who's homeless from into a temporary or permanent place, then there are other issues that that person may have that they also need, more like case management side.
So are you, are you saying that the current program we have using, that the board funded recently to address rental assistance, needs to be modified to address those areas or not?
What program is that? I hadn't seen that program.
The Star C.
I'm familiar with Star C. I've only kind of heard about them. I don't know, like, their intimate workings and how they assess their clients, so I'd have to review to see how they are.
But your effort at CDBG has complimented a lot of these programs already.
Yes, yes, we are, the emergency food and shelter program has CARES funding, and it has regular EFSP funding that is just for food and rental assistance. Now, that's a one-time rent or mortgage payment for the life of the phase, but it does help. It does help clients. And then there's meals in that program, and there's also, you can purchase food for, you know, individuals or homeless persons as well.
So, but I believe you've been provided a second, a second tranche of funding from the federal government for CDBG programs that address that?
Yes, actually, all of the programs that we manage. So there's CDBG, there's ESG, there's CSBG, Community Services Block Grant, and the JAG, Justice Assistance Grant, also has COVID funding as well as the Emergency Food and Shelter Program.
Is the requirement still larger than the funding you're receiving for those? Or but, your but?
The funding that we got, it is larger, some is larger. For EFSP, the CARES funding is larger than the regular allocation. CDBG, it's less than the regular allocation. But the requirements for the standards are all the same. It's still, at the end of the day, federal funding.
How about the overall requirement in the population for this kind of funding to support them and meet their needs? Is there more, is this, is the current, the second level of funding meeting that requirement? Or you still think there's more out there that will require funding from various funding levels?
I think the, the only issue that we've had in getting application was from the Emergency Solutions Grant, the ESG program. That one saw a enormous influx of funding. We have 2.1 million under ESG, and normally our allocation is $286,000. So, but we didn't see the applications from the nonprofits that we thought we would see. We only saw about $300,000 for applications. So we had to go back out for another round of applications to kind of see what are the needs for the nonprofits, like, and how are they going to, you know, potentially utilize this funding? So we're in that process now.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time and also the great work that you and your team are all doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll get into agenda prep. Yes?